All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Welcome to our Wednesday, January 13th, 2021 meeting of the Board of Education. This is actually a joint work session with the Town Board regarding the Form-Based Code. Before we do our introductions with everyone, I just need to take care of a few housekeeping issues for the school board. You need to officially come out of an executive session that we were intending. So the board has been in executive session discussing contract negotiations, potential litigation, employment history of particular persons, matters of health and safety, and receiving advice at the council. May I have a motion and a second from the board to come out of exec and to convene our public session in order to have our joint work session with the Town Board? Okay. If they're all in favor, please say aye. Before we begin, everyone has to move their mics right to their mouth. So Polly and the Town Board can hear us. Does that sound good? Can you hear me? Okay. Hello? Okay, so we gotta make sure we project.
All right, we're trying to some help.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so welcome, everyone. We are happy to be here with the Town Board. Thank you so much for joining us, whether you're in person or by Zoom. So the purpose of our meeting today is to examine the impacts of the Form-Based Code proposal to the school district. And we want to thank the Town Board for joining us to hear our consultants' analysis of enrollment projections, school capacity, and fiscal analysis. And we're very much looking forward to working together. There are many issues and points of discussion and opinions, but in the interest of time and because we have a school board meeting today at 7:30, I spoke to Supervisor Ivy Poole earlier this week. We had a conversation and we agreed to skip opening statements and we're simply going to introduce our respective board members, administrators, and consultants and get right to our presentation. So if that is still okay with you, Ivy, we'll proceed in that way. I see you on the screen in the little box. I hope you can see me. All right. All right then. So for those of you who are new here, I am Vicky Tip. I'm school board president. We have Polly McCall, our school board vice president, who is on Zoom. We have Hillary Grasso, school board member. Warren Messner, school board member. Jane Shepherdson, school board member. We have, on our administration, Dr. Christine Ackerman, our school superintendent. Adam Pease, our assistant superintendent for instruction and curriculum. Tony Sananis, assistant superintendent for human resources and leadership. Assistant superintendent for people personnel services. Ellen Doherty. And assistant superintendent for business, John Chau. And from our consultants, we have, in person, we have Chris Round, who is principal and vice president of Paws &amp; Companies. Peter Angelides, who is from E-Consult Solutions, who is president and principal. Allison Slado, or lawyer, from Steve Paget and Riesel. Frank Robinson from E-Consult Solutions, who is the director. Eric Keier from KGND Architects, their principal and vice president. And on Zoom, we have Jane Liu, who is E-Consult Solutions Associate Director, and Nicola Copley, E-Consult Solutions Senior Analyst. So that's what we have from our end. And go ahead, Ivy.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Vicky, for the introduction. As you said, I'll keep it short this evening. I did just want to thank you all for agreeing to this joint work session. We're really excited to be here. The Form-Based Code, as you all know, I've said multiple times, it's still a draft, and we're really committed to taking the time to get it right. So, you know, rest assured, we have heard the feedback outings here from the Board of Education and from CCSD regarding potentially significant adverse impacts to tax base, the fiscal health of the district, and the quality of the education provided to students in the district. We're actually, all five of us on the Town Board are parents with children in CCSD, and so, you know, we are truly taking these concerns to heart. So we're glad to be here tonight to hear the results of your consultants' analyses, and we're really looking forward to working collaboratively with CCSD and with Board of Education as we endeavor to deal with all of the members and interested agents. So with that said, I'm Ivy Poole, the Newcastle Town Supervisor. I'm joined this evening by deputy supervisor Jeremy Saland, council member Lauren Levin, council member Lisa Katz, council member Lori Morton, our town administrator Jill Shapiro, and our town controller and deputy town administrator Rob Deary. That's all for me. So thanks.
Thank you. Great, great to see everybody. So I will just turn it over to our consultants. I don't know about Chris Round, if you want to start. I'm not sure who would like to, but I will just simply turn it over to you guys.
Sure. Chris Round with the JZ Companies, and we're here tonight just to present the results of work that we've been performing in collaboration with the school district over the last two months. I'm going to hand it right over to Peter Angelides from E-Consult Solutions. He's gonna, Peter's gonna run through his performance, the work that he's done, and then Eric Keier from KGD is gonna follow up with the capacity analysis. And so we'll let you go up here.
Okay, thanks. And thank you for having us up here today. And I am gonna start off by a real reviewing, and at some point, Frank will pick up, and then we'll turn it over to Eric. So we'll begin. I have a clicker. I don't know how to move forward.
Just give me one second.
Sorry, if I may, for the gentleman who's presenting, if you can just put yourself a little bit closer to the microphone. Those of us on Zoom are having a little bit of trouble hearing you.
Same.
No problem. Okay. We're good? Okay. So that's the table slide that shows who we all are. We just covered that. Let me go to the table of contents. So what we'll do today first is present some data, some facts on enrollment history and live births. That's just information that has been used in our projections. We're gonna move over to talk about enrollment projections, with the existing housing stock, basically assuming that nothing changes except for, well, nothing changes, and see what that implies. Then we'll look at the creation of multipliers, which are numbers that basically show how many students you can expect for, per unit, for new construction units. We'll talk about how quickly we get there, and then take those multipliers and add them to projections of new housing stock to see what that means for enrollment. And then we'll roll into a fiscal analysis and property tax analysis that we're trying to walk us all through. And then finally, we'll do a capacity analysis, and that will be Eric. So all of this is in one PowerPoint presentation. Okay. Next. Okay. The next section, enrollment history, we're gonna skip through, and live births, the overview. So this is basic facts about what's going on. The first slide here has two charts on it. The one on the left shows you by itself, just in isolation, the enrollment in the school district over the last 10 years. So you see that in the 2011, 2012 school year, enrollment was 4,083, and as of this year, as of, what did they say, 3,556. So a decline of about 10% over 10 years. And on the right, the same green line represents exactly the same thing. It's the enrollment in the entire school district, but on the other two lines are kindergarten and first grade. You see a decline, but not as steep a decline in those group. In other words, the kindergarten and first grades are smaller than they were, but they haven't shrunk by as much as the overall school district has. The next set of slides are basically similar information, but normalized. So the, in other words, how does that compare to 10 years ago? What's the up and down percentage? So the one on the left shows kindergarten and first grade enrollment now as a percentage of 2010, 2011. So you see the kindergarten is at 90%, 91% of what it was 10 years ago, and first grade is at 72% of the enrollment. They do align each other a little bit, so next year's first grade will probably be substantially larger than 72% of what it was before. Then the right, well, where do the kindergarten kids come from, the first grade? Well, they come from these, and that is what the thing on the right shows, is its birth six years prior to the year. So the one on the left shows the 2010, 2011. And the births we're showing are from six years before, 2004. And Vicky says, how have the number of babies born in various jurisdictions changed over the last 10 years, but really from 16 years ago to six years ago? And you see that through all the jurisdictions, and they are, the lower one, lowest one is the school district itself. The green line is Westchester County, and then the red orange one is New York City, and the gray one is New York State. The school district's birth rate is down by a pretty substantial part. Westchester by 14%, and then the city and state are down by 2% or 4%. And obviously, that's important because that's who ultimately comes to school. The next is just data. Here's a chart that shows the enrollment by grade level for the last 10 years. So that's basic data into that now. What do we do with it? How do we turn that into projections for the future? That's what we're gonna go through right now. This is the enrollment projection based on the existing housing stock. And the very first step is to calculate something called a progression rate calculation. Basically, it's of the kids who are here in third grade, how many next year are going to be in fourth grade? And it's a net number because some of the kids who are here in third grade will be in fourth grade next year. Some will move away or not go to public school next year, but then new kids will come. So it's a net number, includes all of the moveaways, arises, holdbacks, all that sort of stuff. That's all in there. And it varies from year to year, but you can see there is an average. And what we've done is taken the, calculated the progression rate for the last 10 years and then taken an average of it. And the one we actually use is a five-year average all the way at the bottom. And the numbers might be a little small, but you can see they are, the first, the first year actually kindergarten is the ratio of kindergarten students to live births. So that's a little bit different. But then after that, it's what's the first grade is the percentage of the people who are in kindergarten. What's the second grade is the percentage of the people who are in first grade. And after you get past kindergarten first and second, the numbers really hover around one, maybe a little bit above 1.03, 1.0, sometimes a little bit lower. And what that tells you is that the class sizes, year after year after year, are all in. It stays pretty consistent. It's not like classes grow significantly over the years. They're fairly consistent, maybe grow a little bit, but they don't triple or quadruple or anything like that.
So I have a question. Are the kindergarten numbers higher because children that are born in town are just more likely to stay in town until they start school?
Well, some of that is children who are born in town, some of it is children who move into town. So the number of kindergartners you have is much larger than the number of babies born in town. And that's because there are other children who weren't born in town that are moving into town. Okay, so the, but you've hit on a key point, because the number of kids, the number of kindergartners helps drive what goes on after that. In other words, because the progression rate is fairly close to one for all the grades, the number of kindergartners you have really helps set the tone for how large the class is and ultimately how large the enrollment will be. And so a critical thing going forward is how many kindergartners are you gonna have, and that ultimately is based on births plus movements. Can we move to the next slide, please? Thank you. And so because that's such a critical driver, we have looked at it in three ways, or really created three scenarios for going forward. 110 births per year, 135 births per year, 160 births per year. And the question is, you know, how many births are you gonna be, and that will then lead to kindergarten students. If you look at the chart here, well, 110 numbers in the lower right, and it's a little bit faint on the screen, but what you're basically seeing is that the 110th number is an average of births in the 2010s. So the numbers have varied between 120 and 91. On average, it's about 110 births per year in recent history. So that's recent history, 110 per year. But that birth rate is declining over the years, and so what about looking back all the way to 2002, looking back 15 years? The average there is about 135 kids per year, babies per year. And then if you want to ask the question, well, what happens if our birth rate really goes back to where it was in the early 2000s? What would that imply for enrollment? So that's what the three scenarios are. The numbers are the numbers, but they basically represent the current trend in the relatively recent past, the trend going back even further, and then a return to what trend was 10 years ago. And provides a nice range of numbers so you can get a sense as to how much that matters. So 110, 135, 160 births per year. And what we'll be doing is looking at all three of them, but I'm only showing you mostly the numbers for 110. So on to the next slide, please. Literally, I got it. And what this shows you is the enrollment for the school district between now and 2035, based on the existing housing stock and based on that first scenario, 110 births per year. And what you'll see in the light green column on the left is births six years earlier, where we have actual data. We know how many kids were born up to a certain point, so we use that actual data. And then after that, we've used the 110 average, and that implies a certain number of kindergartners. And then they roll through the system using the progression rate numbers that we calculated enrollment for. What this tells you, what the answer, is that the current enrollment is 3,556. Based on 110 births per year and the progression rate is remaining the same, you wind up at 3,597 students, which is basically the same number. It's a 30-something, 40-something, or basically the same number. So no real change in enrollment under this set assumptions. In other words, no new housing stock, and the birth rate as it's been for the past 10 years, and enrollment will basically stay the same. It'll bounce up and down a little bit, but in 15 years, it'll be what it is today. And we did that exact same exercise, only instead of 110 births, we bumped up to 135 and also 160. And that's what you see here. Each of the columns shows you the enrollment. The numbers are not as interesting as the picture, so I'm gonna move it farther forward, and you'll see this is graphically what the projections show. In other words, if the births are, reflect recent past at 110, that enrollment basically stays flat. That's the blue line. The green line is the 135, and the red line, not so surprisingly, is 160. So if births go back to where they were, then you can expect substantially larger school population over the next 15 years.
Excuse me, if I may, can I ask a question? Why are we not considering an additional scenario where the number of births continues to decrease as we've seen over the past 10 years?
So that would certainly be possible. I think you get the basic idea. Though I miss that if one of the questions we're looking at is capacity, then, you know, if you could fit all the students today at 110 students, then a smaller, smaller birth rate would certainly, you'd have fewer students, and you would be able to fit them all.
I have a question about this relative to that proportion of kindergartners relative to new births. So does that presume that if, let's say, there's a higher minus-six-year birth rate, that that same roughly 2.2 multiplier for kindergarten applies? So in addition to a higher birth rate, there's more families moving into the district? Like, do they scale together when you calculate this?
I don't know if she heard my answer.
The answer is around the yes. That is what it means, if they scale together.
And when we look at birth rates for Newcastle or for the school district, do they, do they track with the region? Do they track with the places the people are moving to the district from?
So they're lower than what you see elsewhere in New York State and New York City as well. So the birth rates in the school district itself have declined substantially. Westchester less so, but still have substantially declined. The city and the state are down a little bit, but even, mostly even.
So, sorry, overall proportions are different. Is the rate of change or direction of change the same or different?
The direction for change for all of them is down. The rate is much more sharply down inside the school district than it is in Westchester County, and both of those are much lower than the state and the city.
Thank you.
So this is, again, the enrollment projection assuming no new development, no new buildings. But there are types of new buildings, and that's what we're talking about now. So multipliers. The multiplier is how you figure out how many new students you're gonna get. So just hypothetically, if you build 100 units of some housing type, how many children are gonna come from those 100 units? If every single one of those units had one school child in it, that'd be 100 kids, and your average multiplier for that kind of unit would be one. But obviously, you build a, you know, 100 houses, some will get filled with, some of them will be occupied by people who don't have kids or don't have school-age kids, some will be occupied by families with more than one school-age kid. So what's the average? Well, that's what we're talking about. The multiplier is the average. And we develop multipliers for all housing types for the school district. And we're gonna do, walk you through very quickly how we did it, and then talk about what it means. So we have a customized approach based on analysis of what's called the public use microdata sample, the PUMs, which is a product from the U.S. Census, which is from the American Community Survey. The American Community Survey is the thing that replaced the long form on the census, and it's given to about 2% of the population, 2% of the households in the U.S. every year. We get it accumulated and then made public by the census for researchers to use. We don't get the whole thing. We get part of it. Anybody can download it. We use census data quite a lot, so we delve fairly deeply into it, and we can use that information to calculate multipliers. And the PUMs data is available all over the country. What we do is pick areas that are similar enough to Chapel Hill School District so that, you know, the information we get from the current form is going on here. So in other words, we're creating multipliers based on your school district plus areas around it. We need to have enough data so that we get reliable estimates, but we also want the data to reflect the school district. So on this slide, oh, I should point out that, so multipliers are a long-used technique. A commonly used set of multipliers is from Rutgers University in New Jersey. That set of multipliers are based on 20-plus-year-old data and they're based on statewide data, which is why we tend not to want to use them. We'd rather create a custom one for your geography than big sets. And so that is what we've done. And what you see on the slide here is the public school multipliers. We see the areas of New York and Connecticut that we draw data from to create the multipliers. And again, we're trying to get areas that are reasonably like the catchment for the Chapel Hill School District. And it's based on income, it's based on house value, and we need enough population for it to work. On the chart, the dark green is the school district, and then the rest dark green is the New York part, and the blue is the Connecticut part. And multipliers are for every kind of unit. So we have single-family multipliers with three-bedroomed units or three-plus attached, and then attached both townhomes and two-family with two bedrooms or three bedrooms. And then multifamily owner-occupied apartments or condominiums of one, two, or three bedroom, renter-occupied one, two, or three bedroom as well. And we've done this for two types of units, affordable units and market rate units. So these numbers, multipliers, represent basically an average over the entire area that we looked at of how many public school children there are in that type of unit. So for example, for a multifamily renter-occupied apartment for a market rate unit, there are 0.33 children per unit. So if there are 100 units of that type, you'd expect 33 public school children. So those are the multipliers themselves. What do we do with them? Well, we have to multiply them by something, and what we multiply them by is new units that come into the district. The slide I'm showing right now is the new housing development that we know about coming to the district. The first three of these, the Conifer Building, 91 Bedford Road, and the townhouses at Chapel Hill Crossing, that, those are under construction or are well along, so the completion date is upcoming. The unit mix is fairly well-known. The last one is based on the impact statement for the Form-Based Code, and those numbers are not set, obviously, but those are the numbers we have started with, and those are the numbers we've used. So we apply 665 one-bedroomed units, 232 two-bedroomed units, for 1,997 new units, and then a loss of nine units of existing housing.
So can I ask just a clarifying question?
Sure.
With the, for the new, the new units, the number of one bedrooms is taken out of the town's information, right? The DTEIS, so you have 665 one-bedroomed units here?
Yes.
Right? So was that your assumption? Was that an assumption taken by the Form-Based Code and DTEIS documents?
No, it wasn't. It was not our assumption.
Okay, so that, okay.
Yeah. We took it from their document.
Right. And I do understand later on, you have, you know, different numbers for different configurations, different proportions.
We have some.
But I just wanted to establish where these numbers were coming from.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's accurate.
If I may, on that point, with regard to the assumed completion date, you have here that 2023 to 2030 is the assumed completion date for new units resulting from the Chapel Hill hamlet. Where did you come up with that assumption? Where did you come up with that assumption?
That was our assumption. It's impossible to know when exactly if this will happen. So we assumed that the earliest they could be opened was 2023 and that they would continue through build-out 2030. That's an assumption that we made. It could be later, it could be earlier, we don't know. What you'll see in a couple of slides is that we smoothed out, we spread the development out over multiple years. So it's a little bit a year for several years. So to the extent that...
To that point, if you're using the DGEIS and the assumptions that the town has made in putting that document together, that our professional consultants, rather, have made in putting that document together, that assumes a 15-year timeline.
Okay, well, to the extent that it actually occurs over 15 years, that would push out the impacts a little bit. By doing it in 10 years, you do get the benefit of sort of seeing how it happens and seeing the impact of starting to roll through the school system a little more quickly. So how do the multipliers then work? So we had multipliers, we had new housing. And then this just shows a simple calculation. Number of units times the multiplier equals the number of new public school children plus the amount. So what we see at the bottom there is about 150 new children at full build-out based on these multipliers and based on all the assumptions we're making. And then the slide I'm on right now shows basically how that spreads out over time. Again, this is a bunch coming in the next few years because those units are being built. And then the stuff that happens in the hamlet, again, it actually happens over to the timeframe of the impact that hit different times. So we have, how does that then fit to enrollment? We have a table that basically takes these children, adds them into the existing enrollment, and then rolls it forward the same way that the regular enrollment projection works. And that's for one of the scenarios. And the next slide shows all three scenarios plus the scenarios we already looked at, the ones that don't have new units. And that will get us to this slide, which is very similar to the other, the first one we saw. This is the enrollment with the new development, as it goes forward. And under the basic 110 birth scenario, you see a roughly 200-person increase in enrollment over 15 years. And at the much higher birth rate, higher birth rate, you see a 5,000-person enrollment.
Clear, if I'm understanding this correctly, again, you're looking at district-wide. You're not looking at, you're not looking at just the hamlet to get to those numbers.
District-wide, that's correct.
Right, so, but in terms of the hamlet, also, if you can just back up one moment, please. When you have the 10 units, or pardon me, the 10 students at Conifer, you use a multiplier of point, bear with me, I apologize, I have to play it myself. .14 for a one-bedroom and a .06, .68 for a two-bedroom. There's 28, I think, apartments in Conifer, of which one-bedrooms are 17 and two-bedrooms are 11, which is just inconsistent with the ultimate calculation on the new students added at Conifer, where you have 10. But I believe that number would be less if you broke that out further. Based on your, based on your numbers. Because 17 at .14 and 11 at .68, I don't believe is 10. I think it's a lot less.
That's a math question I can address. I don't want to do math while I'm on stage, because I always get it wrong. But that's a great question. I think it is 10, actually. We'll check that, but I think it is 10. Okay, so...
Jeremy, it's 9.7.
Yeah, that's nice, yeah. And I also want to confirm, just to make sure that everyone is clear with the Conifer building, is that we assume that all the units for Conifer building is affordable units? So the multipliers for affordable units are relatively higher than the market rate units?
Right, they are. They are all affordable. I was surprised that the district didn't include projections for the button-hook property. Here. Properties.
So I am going to, I'm going to pass the mic over to Frank, who will finish off the analysis.
Thank you. So what you see here is a enrollment projection adding outer-school district placement. And what you see here is that assuming that the ratio of the outer-school placement is 1 to 100 based on the current history, historic enrollment data. And so not to read the whole slide to you, I know that this is a hard one to read, but looking at the final numbers, at the bottom, you see the 1.1% in the enrollment without units and then 223 with those units. And that number goes on. Scenario two, you'll see 681, which is a 19% cumulative, and 863, or 24% cumulative. And then scenario three, so with, without the new units, it's 1,311, which is a 36.5% cumulative. And then with the units, it's 1,493, which is a 41% cumulative. We wanted to examine how this would impact the fiscal budget and fiscal analysis. Just a refresher here. This is the current school budget in the state. Right now, your budget is $128.237, $168 million and roughly $35,000 per student total expenditures at revenue. And that's with 3,590 students. What we did is work with the finance office to look at what the projected budget was. And this was important because of how last year has affected kind of what's happening this year. And a couple of key things, just to note, again, not to read everything to you. But there is an increase of about 2.8 million. But there are also some differences. So one difference is in the revenue line for state sources. Last year was 9.9 million. This year is 9 million. The assumption that, the numbers that have come back, that the state has cut some of those revenues. And that's having an impact on the budget going forward. Another number I will point out is the use of money and property, which was 775, but it's cut back to 250,000. Again, another, another cut because of the things that happened last year. And the third number I will look at, the tax revenue, of course. As things happened last year, it has an impact on the tax revenue. So that went less, which of course put the real property tax up a little bit. But that's, this is the baseline that we kind of wanted to use to look at what's going to, what could happen with this scenario. Here are the major takeaways. The major takeaways are that, for the most part, the growth and, the budget growth and the property tax growth are correlates with the few exceptions. Of course, when you look at the first line, 21, 22, you see the top, the tax growth, 6.8, because of the reasons that we stated before, the impact of COVID, less tax, property use, and those other, those other scenarios. But what you'll see sort of consistently that the growth in the first year, 2029, 23, for scenario one, without Chappala Hamlet units, grows 1.3 in the first year, 2.3 in the years, and then you can see those years going forward. So mainly staying around no more than three, but between 1.5 and 2 consistently with the few exceptions. When you look at that projected budget growth with the new hamlet, you see that it might be some slight variations, but pretty consistent. You start to see in 23, 24, 3.4% growth, and it correlates throughout. So 1.9, 2.7, and it consistently grow. Then you start to see it tail, tailor off, with the exception of 2032, 33. Now, this slide, we wanted to do, what the school board wanted to make sure that you saw the background, so we'll leave this for you to look at. But there is an inflation rate assumed or 2% on the relative items. But I wanted to make sure that you had that. But I won't go through those numbers here and the key numbers we just went through.
Is there a model?
Go ahead, Lori, I'm sorry.
All right, is there a model like this for a full build-out under current zoning?
I'm sorry, I did not.
Can you say that question again?
Sure. Is there modeling that is based on full build-out of housing units based on current zoning for the hamlet?
Yes, the projected budget, let me get to that. So the modeling has both. When you look through, I'm trying to, sorry. So you'll see the modeling with the Chapala hamlet. You see, you see that scenario two has without. You see it has with. So we have both in there for review. So yes, it has both, the modeling for both. Did I answer your question?
So, so sorry, so without hamlet, new units, is that no new units in the hamlet? Or is that the current allowable new units based on current zoning?
Which is, I believe, 341 units.
So what we got here is...
Frank, my mic. We did not run a scenario where we projected background growth assuming full build-out under the existing zoning. We utilized the birth rate projections as kind of a placeholder for that. And it really wasn't germane to our exercise.
So to be clear, then, so if I'm understanding, so you ignored the current zoning that allows for 340 units? Or did you include that?
It's annoying, we couldn't hear you.
To be clear, I'm not understanding, because also I have a hard time hearing. Did you ignore or include the 341 units that are part of the current zoning allotment?
Yes.
Yes, you ignored, or yes, you included?
They're not included in these scenarios. These scenarios include the existing housing as it's right now. And then the new built units were based on the build-out scenarios in the hamlet and the three developments we know about. Okay, so it was built out with 200 units over the next five, six years. As a matter of fact, we don't have the analysis. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so as we wanted to show things, wanted to show the projected budget rate, here are the three scenarios. Again, that's a 2% inflation rate here. But here are the scenarios that you see. The projected, on the left, the projected budget without the Chappala hamlet. And on the right, the projected budget with the Chappala hamlet. As you would think, they grow proportionally. The budgets grow proportionally from the scenarios. As you, of course, increase students, you increase the budget as well.
So again, unfortunately, we only got this around 3:30. So I first looking at this in the past hour or two. But to look at this, this number here on the right, total projected budget with the Chappala hamlet, you're using birth rates which are at least inconsistent with what we've seen locally over the past 10 years or so. In fact, you're, the worst-case scenario, the worst-case scenario is assuming numbers of birth rate that far exceeds what we've been in the recent past. As in fact, does the number of birth rates for scenario number two. Do you know when the last time, and I have to look back, our births were at 135?
Scenario one is based on 110 births, which is basically the average of the last six, seven years.
110?
Yes.
And just to be, just to be clear. So scenario three is simply the average in the 2000s? That's simply what it is?
That's correct.
So those numbers are accurate based on, on that range of, on that time period?
No, no, again, I understand. But when we're looking at the projected budget and people are seeing what it could potentially be, I think it's more reasonable to be using realistic numbers that are consistent with our recent history as opposed to 20-year-old data that is really not as applicable. Historically, it's not going on the same trajectory, so.
Am I correct, though, that scenario number one is recent data? The 110 is an average over the last?
That's correct. And sir, the reason why we do the three scenarios is that this is a science and an art. So we were looking at the current data, but there are things that we don't know that we want to make sure that you capture just in case something else happens. So we have a baseline with the 110, which is the last six years. But these other scenarios give you an opportunity to say if something that we don't know about, which I'll talk about in a second, happens, these are the, not likely, but other scenarios that could happen if there was some population growth that we can't predict. I'm cautious of time, and I know we have another presenter. So, sorry. I just wanted to highlight this last slide and just say, to begin with the correlation, these are the property taxes that are correlated with that. The left, the property taxes without the Chappala hamlet, the left, of course, with Chappala hamlet. And again, based on the scenarios, as we talked about, with the budget, these are the estimated growth. And lastly, just to follow up on what we said before, there are open issues that we don't know. And again, I'll reclaim that this is an art and a science. And although we have science and data, there are things that we don't know. You know, there are considerations about the impact of the real estate, the backfill, you know, if you sell, what comes back. We can't predict that. There are some things that we might know, but we can't predict that. You don't know the effects of the full economy from COVID. And I will also say from things that has happened in the last several days and weeks, those things will have an impact on the economy, which are unpredictable. And then the last thing we wanted to make sure we highlighted was the change in housing mix. If you decide to change the housing mix, that will have an impact. So if, you know, some properties, if they convert from one bedrooms to one bed... So if, you know, some properties, if they convert from one bedrooms to one bedroom to a den, or these units with two bedroom multipliers, you see the graph here that they, that they will have an impact. So if X percentage of one bed bedroom units converted to two bedroom units, these are the projected students that could be added. So reserve center is 180, 30% it could be up to 225, 50% it could be 255, and at 80% it could be up to 300 students. So we just want to make sure that we accounted for if somehow through the zoning process, the number of units change that can have an impact on the numbers as they are. And those are some of the things that the art of this, that we couldn't predict. I am going to turn it off to Eric.
One thing I might suggest to that point, because I think it's really critical for us to show that, is I believe that we skipped over slide number 20, which shows the breakdown in the DGEIS. I don't know if you have the ability to look back to that, but that slide sort of highlights the assumptions that are made in the DGEIS today with regard to the breakdown in the number of bedrooms, and shows the number of projected school age children that you've come up with using your multiplier as 150. So that might actually be a place where, on that slide, you might include those alternate scenarios as well, I may make a suggestion, so that, you know, using the projections in the DGEIS and the multiplier that you all have formulated, you come up with a potential number of school age children of 150, and then you can show a couple of different kind of scenarios based on, based on something information you have on this slide.
Okay.
I just want to say, I like that idea, Ivy, and if it's helpful, we could perhaps incorporate these numbers into some of the graphs. You know, certainly if that would help you in your thinking about the number of bedrooms, which I am actually not sure whether you can, you can control, I know that you were looking into that. So it would be helpful to know whether you can include a requirement in the code as to the number of bedrooms. I believe that was unclear, I think you've got inconsistent answers. At some point, it was no, and at some point it was yes, so I think that's something you're looking into.
So hi, this is Eric Keier from KDD Architects. We were retained to perform a school capacity study for this overall exercise, which included assessing the six schools in the school district, three elementary schools, two middle schools, and high school. We evaluated the future enrollment increases that you heard from ESI and their projections, and then we applied the New York State Education Department standards to the room capacity and the classroom utilization rates. And then finally, we consulted the district administrators to factor in the unique education specifications for the Chappaqua Central School District. This slide shows the six different schools in the district, and when they were built, and how many renovations have occurred over the course of those years, and that your district is divided into three grade configurations, a K4, 58, and 912. Some interesting historical enrollment data. Currently, there's 3,556 students, which is a historical low over the course of the last 20, 25 years. The peak in 2007, 2008 was 4,254 students. So over the course of the past 13 years, there's been a 700 student decline in the school district. And what's attributed to that too? Well, some of it's the regular ebbs and flows of population. Population goes up and goes down, and we're right now in a trough. We could stay in a trough, or we could start to increase the population. In 2008, during the recession, you can see these numbers actually fairly significantly decreased, both in this school district as well as other regional school districts, partially because of the recession altered family planning. And we all know, living here and around Chappaqua and Westchester area, the property sales and transfers have been slower over the course of the last 10 years since the recession up until 2020, and actually, this last year, we've actually seen quite an increase. And it should be noted that, you know, that's part of the ebbs and flows of how the school district grows and shrinks over the years. Elementary school today has 1,238 students compared to 1,606 students back in 2006. That's a 30% decline. The middle school had a 20% decline over the course of the last 10 years, and the high schools had a 15% decline over the course of the last six or seven years. So, and all this data is showing from the existing housing stock has accommodated a larger population in the past. This isn't talking about constructing new housing, this is the existing housing that's there at, you know, 10, 15 years ago accommodated more students than we have today. So the capacity study process, we analyzed the existing floor plans for all the schools, we met with the school principals to verify the instructional room use of each classroom and space, teaching space. There were numbers in the planned capacity for each of those instructional spaces. We confirmed all our required model program spaces were provided based on the ed specs, and we discussed the maximum slash preferred class sizes with district leadership for all those grades. You have standards for maximum capacity depending on the age of each of the students, and so we utilized those capacities as we looked at the different age groups in the different schools. From that, we created a physical space inventory spreadsheet, basically an Excel spreadsheet, that shows every single room and teaching space in all six, all six buildings, and what the square footage of each is and what the current use is. And then we also calculated capacity accounting for the program efficiencies, as well as the room utilization rates at the secondary schools, and we'll go into a little bit greater detail in a couple slides. Let's start with the K4. So the capacity analysis for the elementary school, basically to establish that target capacity, we multiplied the number of homerooms times the number of grades, which is five in each of those schools, by the target class size. Target class size in kindergarten is 20, in first grade it's 23, in second grade and beyond it's 25. And so those are set numbers that we utilized based on Chappaqua Central Schools district. Then we reduced that target capacity by using an efficiency factor, and that's typically 85% is an industry standard, and it accounts for the annual fluctuation in grade level size. You never, if you plan on having 100 students in a grade, you're never necessarily going to have 100, and you, and you can't necessarily fit 100 in that group, group band. And so that's where, and especially since you have three different elementary schools that, and you have set districting, that in one school, you may have 85 kids in that grade, and one of the other schools might have 95 or 100. And so there's some flexibility that we have to build into the overall capacity study.
No, it's, it's, sorry, I'm a, I'm a project manager by trade. I think of this as being like your contingency planning here, so you basically build in like a 15% contingency plan to all of these numbers in case you overrun.
I think it's almost the opposite, is that you can't go over 100, because if you go over 100, you have to add a classroom.
But so you have 15% on top of the capacity that you then show on the subsequent slides?
It's actually just the opposite, is that if you're planning for 100 students, you're basing it on 85 students.
But you could go up to 800 students.
You could go up to 100 students. If you go up to 101 students, then you're going to have to add a class. Understand that?
Yeah, but you're planning for 85, so the likelihood that you're going to get to 101 is pretty small. It's good planning, I get it, I get it.
And so then, the total of all those classrooms utilizing this method is what we refer to as the functional capacity. And the functional capacity of all three of these elementary schools is the same, it's 521 students. And that's based on five sections of all five grades with one additional classroom that's a flexible, so that if you have a bubble here, you have a little bit of ability if you go over that 100 that we were just referring to. If you have 105, you could add one section for that grade as it flows up through the grade levels. And the other thing you also look at in elementary schools, not just the homerooms, but you need to look at all the common spaces as well. You need to make sure that the gyms, the cafeterias, libraries, and i-term, the special subject classrooms are all an adequate size and meet the state standards. So for example, gymnasiums, you're allowed to, by New York State standards, allowed to have up to 500 students per gym space. You don't have to worry about that, you have multiple gym spaces, but if we went from 450 to 520 students and we only had one gym space, we'd actually have to add a gymnasium. So that's the type of thing that we also look at on the side, just to confirm that all the common spaces are also meeting your specifications. So this, this is kind of a little snippet of a multi-page spreadsheet for all three elementary schools. This just shows Roaring Brook, but it would be consistent for West Orchard as well as And I'm going to go through the different lines. So the first couple of vertical columns is the school name and the room number, location, then the classroom type, the target class size based on the ed specs. So you can see in the third column there, it says 20, 23, 25, that's the maximum number of students that we could put in that classroom. Then we multiply that by the efficiency factor, and ultimately, that gives us the functional capacity of each one of those classrooms. And when we add all those classrooms together, that's how we arrive at the 521 for all three elementary schools. The middle school and high school capacity analysis is a little bit different, because all those students don't stay in a homeroom, they move around all day long. And so in this case, we need to count all instructional spaces for the capacity analysis, and we utilize a slightly different process. We still have the same efficiency factor, but we also add a utilization rate, because each classroom or each teaching space is used a different number of periods per day depending on its use. So for a general classroom, for example, you, and this is state standards, I know we use a lot, I'm scheduled here, but state standards is typically you're using a general classroom seven out of nine periods, which is an 83% room use rate. For a science or special subject lab type of space, it's typically five out of nine periods, and so that brings it down to about 56%. And so not only are you factoring the efficiency factor, but then you're multiplying that by a room use rate to accommodate a functional capacity at the middle school and the high school level. And then similar to the elementary school, we're also looking at the common spaces to make sure they're all adequately sized. So this is for Seven Bridges, again, this was a small snippet of a long spreadsheet, and we just show the room use rate there highlighted, because everything else is generally the same, but when you factor in that additional room use rate, you can see that factors at .78 or .56, for example, you're using that additional multiplier to get the functional capacity per room. And so the total capacity for Seven Bridges School is 774 students. Similarly, you can do the same thing for Bell, and Bell Middle School's functional capacity is 701 students. So Bell has a slightly lower capacity than Seven Bridges, and that comes into effect when we start to look at where the students are coming from in the district, and where additional housing units are built in the area that's affecting Bell and Grafflin, it obviously affects those schools to a greater extent than, than the other schools in the district. Orscreely's functional capacity is 1,480 students. So this shows the total, you can see the three elementary schools, Roaring Brook, Grafflin, and West Orchard all have 521. You can see the middle schools are in the 700 range, the high school at the upper 1,400. They have a total functional capacity in the district today of 4,518 students. So then, we overlaid this information onto the material that you heard, enrollment material that you heard from ESI this evening. And you can see the green horizontal line there is where we are today. And then we, similar to what ESI had mentioned earlier, looked at this from the three scenarios, the 110, the 135, and the 160. Again, 110 is based on an average of the last 10 years, the 160 was based on between 2000 and 2010, and the 135 was basically the average between 2000 and 2020. So when we did this analysis, we looked at the average for that entire 20-year period, we applied the enrollments, and you can see for, in the green columns in the middle, that means that we have plenty of capacity. When it gets to the yellow in the middle, which is six to nine years from now, or five to seven years from now, we start to hit or get close to a capacity at Grafflin, because Grafflin is in the center of the village, and where most of the housing that's being proposed would be constructed. And so for West Orchard and Roaring Brook, there doesn't seem to be an issue in the foreseeable future at this level. Once we get beyond 10 years, you can see that we start to get into the negative numbers at the elementary school levels based on the capacity of 521.
Is there, is there a reason that it's not colored for scenarios one and three?
Well, it's covered, well, it's not colored. Well, just because it was, I, we would be happy to color it, we didn't color it just because scenario one is mostly green, and scenario three is mostly red.
Okay, I was just wondering, what might you do in something different?
No, if it's important, we can edit this and we could color all three. We took the average of the last 20 years, expecting that the ebbs and flows of the past 20 years are going to come back, and quite frankly, 2020, the birth rate was 120, so it was somewhere between scenario one and scenario two in this past year.
I just remember at the beginning of the presentation, we talked about what the maximum number of students, what the sort of peak was in terms of when we saw the maximum number of elementary students, and at that time, I believe that the peak happened, I took a note on this, back in 2006, when we had 1,606 elementary school age children. So at some point, we were acting in the red, so I'm just curious, what, what made it feasible for us to act in the red back then that, that would make it red now, and unfeasible going forward? Infeasible? Infeasible?
Well, some of that has to do with changing educational programs. We've done quite a bit of work in the district over the past 20 years in terms of We've done quite a bit of work in the district over the past 20 years in terms of next generation education, which modified some of the spaces. Over that 20-year period of time, also special education, how you utilize spaces changes. And so a lot of spaces that might have been able to be utilized as general education spaces now have specific purposes that are different from 10, 15, 20 years ago.
Can I ask a question whether any of that would have been, just because I had children here at that time in portable classrooms? Because I do remember during that period of time, especially at Roaring Brook, there were a number of portable classrooms because we were over capacity. And there were things in portables for a while. Is that possible?
So at Roaring Brook, I believe we had portables and then when we did the construction project in 2000, we eliminated them. So we replaced the portables with full power.
I just wondered if we increased capacity since then? Because I think at one point, we were struggling.
Yeah. And also, this may predate my being in the district. At what point did we switch the fifth graders to the middle school?
That was at that same time, 2003.
Because at some point, we had fifth grades in the elementary school.
That's right.
Because of the overcrowding, the fifth grade went into the middle school, which was, you know, quite controversial at the time. But we certainly would not want to move the fourth grade to the middle school.
Clarify, and I'm sorry again, I'm trying to catch up and bounce around as we're reading this. The difference between at least our consultant's assessment and your assessment is it's 150 new students on the maximum build-out, public land, five stories, based on what you analyzed as opposed to 114 and based on what our consultants analyzed. Is that correct? Am I reading that right? Basically, a 36 student difference.
I didn't follow all that. I think.
No, you're basically saying that there was a previous report that they developed that said 114 students and we're saying it's 150 students.
That's accurate.
Okay, so 36, so there was a bigger fear that it was astronomically greater, but so it's a 36 student difference. And when you're going over classroom size and number of students, if you look at page 12, which was the district enrollment projection, irrespective of what happens, which is, this is why this, I think, is a good exercise here, because irrespective of what happens in the hamlet, this is something that the district should be looking at. But based on scenario number one and scenario number two, the district never exceeds the 4,500 some odd maximum amount before we hit that 85%. Again, not really the full amount, but hit that 85%. And only in year 2032 to 2033, when we hit 4,612, does the district exceed that. So in the worst-case scenario, assuming that everything stayed the same and there was a maximum build-out and the town board passed this particular, you know, as it is now, you would just add 150 students to these numbers that you have on page 12 to see when we would, in theory, reach that maximum amount and break through or go above and beyond what the functional best-case scenario was. Is that accurate? So basically adding 150, based on what your analysis is, as a worst-case scenario, if you go to page 12, we could say 150 plus all of these numbers, whatever that is, if it exceeds 4,500 some odd number of students, that would be in excess of that 85%?
That's accurate, except for then that's assuming that we have a balance across the district, that all three elementary schools have the same number of students, the two middle schools are accommodated according to their capacities, and then the high schools might filter further.
Even under the worst-case scenario, at least district-wide, under 110 and under 135, we still don't hit that 4,500 some odd number of students. But I understand what you're saying, there may be an issue in the individual schools.
That's right then. And that's basically the synopsis that we found here, is that Grafflin and Bell will look like as we go into the future, that there will be a capacity issue based on the existing zoning that we have here in the district in terms of district.
If we look at scenario one and scenario three, but not if we look at scenario one. So not if we consider the trend over the past 10 years, only if we look at the data that goes back 20 years, do we have the capacity issue, correct?
And that's correct. And that's why we bracketed it. We bracketed with 110 up to the 160, because that's what we've seen over the course of the last 20 years. And as mentioned earlier, even this last year, it went up fairly significantly from about 100 to 120. So is that a one-year flip or is this the beginning of a new increase?
It strikes me as a bigger issue district-wide. This is really not a hamlet issue. This is something that the district should be examining irrespective of this. Or maybe it was a catalyst for the district to examine this, but it's a district-wide issue irrespective of the 114 or 150 maximum case scenario.
Yes, capacity definitely is going to be addressing both the enrollment that would be based on new housing as well as existing housing, the turnover. And so that's what we were looking at, both.
So, yeah, Eric, to follow up on that question, it looks like the numbers 180 and 150 because the multiplied capital for the Chapala Hamlet is 150 and the new students added and new constructions, 180. So, I mean, the numbers are the numbers.
180 includes the 90 Bedford Road and the Chapala Crossing and the Conifer Units. It doesn't, it's not exclusive to the hamlet.
Right. 250, 180. The 36 difference, that's again, assumes the maximum build-out, that everything is kept at five stories where it's applicable, all public land is sold. I understand. Thank you.
I just want to do a little time management, because we're at 7:23. And I think it's important Eric finishes his part of the presentation and that the town board has the opportunity to ask any further questions. Because we're going to be having another presentation during our regular board meeting. So Eric, I don't think you have any slides left, right?
This is pretty much the end. It just basically shows that Orskerely, based on an average of 135, does not have an issue. Even if we accelerate and go up to 160 over the course of the next 15 years, it doesn't look like there's a capacity issue at the high school. So that capacity issue that we're looking at based on the analysis this evening is looking at Bell and Grafflin as potential challenges in the future.
So, thank you, Eric. And I thank you to our consultants. So I just, we have, the participants on the screen can't see, but we have a number of members in the audience that I know that our night is designed, that if there is public comment or public questions, that would happen at the regular Board of Education meeting, not right now. But I do think it's important that the town board gets a chance to ask any further clarifying questions that they need, because this information is for you to be able to have the information you need to look forward in your decision-making process while our consultants are still here. So I do think that it would be okay right now, if we move to the place where the town board has an opportunity to ask any remaining questions that they feel they need to have based on the information that was presented.
Right, absolutely. So Ivy, you and your fellow town board members, please feel free to use the remainder of this time to ask your questions. And David, we can always regroup later and have another work session together.
Great. I think that's probably prudent, given the fact that the town board received this presentation at four o'clock this afternoon, and it has a lot of really good, dense data in here. And I'm not a numbers person, so I like to be able to dig into it on my own and take a deeper dive, you know, with our professional staff. So I actually, I asked my questions during the, I see Jeremy raising your hand. Hold on just a second. I asked my questions during the presentation. I have no further questions. But I do want to put a pin in the fact that, you know, once we get back and we have a chance to dig into it a little more and talk to our team back at Town Hall, I would assume that we'll have some further questions for your consultants and for you on the, Jeremy, did you have a?
Yeah, if you can look at the page 30 through 35, and those basically break out the projected budgets, number of students, and then, you know, breaks out what would cost. And part of me, it's, I messed up on my math earlier and I could have here as well. But if we look at page 30, the price per student, if you break it out, is $42,220.72. And that's where there is, at 2029, 2030, which is the scenario with no new units. But if I'm not mistaken, and if you look across the board at all the scenarios, they basically, the price per student ranges from roughly 42.2 to 41.8. So there's not really that much of a difference in terms of the cost to educate per student irrespective of the, regardless of the number of students in the district. Is that fair, am I understanding that right by reading that and basically dividing the number of projected students by the total budget?
Yes.
So whether there was 4,204 students in 2029 and 30, or there was 3,603, the price to educate per student is still roughly that $42,000, give or take a couple hundred dollars.
The only feature that's not included in that is any capital improvements that would be required based on a higher enrollment.
It assumes all standards stay the same, that there's no changes in programming requirements, et cetera. Those things we can't predict. And it assumes that the, you saw the slide, that the students that are placed out of district continue to be placed out of district. If they had to come into the district, that would be a different scenario.
May I ask a question about just the multiplier as well as just the data going forward? So am I understanding correctly that the 150 that you base this on with the 997 units that you use from the DGIS, that's assuming that all 997 units are rental units, not condo, fee simple, et cetera, et cetera, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
So in the event, thank you for asking that question. So in the event that if and when town property was ever sold, if it becomes a part of this, if it was made fee simple, it would have a drastic impact on these, at least the dollars.
I just want to say, I think, I, you know, we had to use today, because we got this so late and we're all first hearing from the consultants today, I think this was really more of just educational and getting to understand what the analysis is. I think the town board and the Board of Ed should really, once we've all had time to digest this, make sure that we can sit down to have another discussion to really see where we are and everyone's views on this and any, you know, what, where we think we can come out on this.
I agree.
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I guess the other question that I don't need an answer to today, but perhaps we could think about for future discussion, would be relative impacts for zoning that included town property or did not include town property. And essentially, including that in this model building to understand those, the impact of those alternatives. And I just want to thank the presenters for entertaining questions as we went. I think it's important to be able to ask them as we go so we understand the model as it's getting built. So I really appreciate your flexibility for entertaining that. It was really helpful for me.
I can actually answer that last question. So we, from the information we had, we broke that out. If you look at page 21, there's private land and public land. And then the last ones were assuming the public land, but instructed that the public land is going to be a little more complex. So putting that towards the end of the model would have been best.
I do, you know, I just do just want to reiterate that it might be worthwhile to go back and take a look at these projections as to when these units would come online and just make sure that we make that consistent across the projections we're making in the DGIS and the modeling that you're doing here.
Thank you, Derek. Can I ask a question about what I just said? Is there, one thing I haven't understood completely is, is there, you're not on my side, are there, in the 15-year projection in the DGIS, is that, are there stopping points in it or is that as much as anything else a best guess? That's what I'm unclear on, on the 15-year build-out timeframe. Is there, are there reasons that it would have to take that long? Or is that just everybody's best guess is that's how long it would take for the full scale of the DGIS to be built out?
So that is the estimates that we've used in the DGIS with regard to how long we estimate it would take to reach a potential maximum build-out due to the number of confluences, factors that would need to sort of align in order for all of those properties to be built out to the maximum scenario that's in the DGIS. That said, one of the things that the town board has been discussing in our internal work sessions on the DGIS is whether we have the ability to build in different mechanisms by which we can control the rate of development. And so we are asking our professional consultants to take a look at what those mechanisms might look like, whether it's something like, you know, limiting the number of building permits that can be simultaneously issued, which I think is something that Lisa, Councilwoman Katz, recommended. Or if we were talking about phasing for the implementation, sort of by area within the hamlet and the study area. So there's a couple of ideas that we've bantered around as a town board. None of us are planning or land use experts by trade, so take all of that with a grain of salt and understand that that's laypeople just trying to kind of brainstorm. But we've asked our professional consultants to go back and take a look at that. We're at a point right now, I will just, you know, to be candid with the Board of Education, we're at a point right now where we've had so many really thoughtful and excellent questions that have come in and so many conversations among the town board, where we've acknowledged those comments that we've received and the feedback that we've received. And we're actually really looking forward to getting to a point where we can wrap up our public hearing and turn this back to our consultants so that we can actually start to get answers to some of these questions. Because it has, as wonderful as it has been to collect feedback, it's also going to be really great to start to be able to answer with some degree of expertise what might happen next.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to, are there any other questions before we transition into the regular business meeting? And Vicki wraps up the work session? Okay, great. For our audience who, I forgot to say this, for our audience who are watching this live, we posted the presentation on our website under the agenda, so it's there for your review as well. Thank you, Vicki.
Yeah, and I just want to add to, you know, in terms of the questions that are left out there, I completely agree that I think we all need more time to digest this information that we all recently got. And so I'd love to get together with you, Ivy, and talk and see whether we can schedule another meeting for us after, you know, given some time and when everyone feels that they've had enough time to take a close look at this. I'm personally curious about exploring a little bit more about the number of bedrooms that will, that would be built in whatever iteration that you choose to go into. And the other variable is the effect of COVID, because we know that people are moving out of the cities into the suburbs. We're not sure what the effect on the birth rate is due to COVID. So those are two variables that I can think of offhand. But, so I will just wrap up by saying that, and I could have said this at the beginning, but I just want to be very clear that the school board and the entire school district is absolutely committed to educating any and all kids that come to the district. And I think it's just very important to understand that what we want to do here is get as accurate information as we can so that the town board can make informed decisions and so that the school board can plan for whatever enrollment we can anticipate in the future. So I just want to be clear, as to our purpose here, it is not to prevent kids from moving into the district, it is to understand. It is to understand how many will move in so that everyone can plan adequately. So having said that, is there anything else that anyone would like to say? I know we're running short of time and we'll have the opportunity to continue the conversation at our meeting. So, okay. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you to our consultants. Thank you to the town board for joining us today. And I'll just say that this is to be continued. All right, so thank you very much. And we will close our joint work session. Thank you for that, Ivy.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I will be closing the joint work session.
Okay. I will second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.